Good evening and welcome to the Town Board of the Town of Austin Work Session and Special Meet for Tuesday, August 31st, 2021. Please rise and join me for the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll try again.
Councilwoman Feldman, Councilwoman Shaw, present, Councilwoman Meyer, present, Councilwoman Walter, supervisor Lumber. Yeah, okay, our first resolution is the tenure with Kirby Eisner and Curly LLC, resolve the Town Board hereby authorizes the supervisors to execute a tenure agreement with Kirby Eisner and Curly LLC effective August 26th, 2021 to render legal services and represent the town's interest in proceedings pending in the bankruptcy court in the Southern District of the Bronx.
A motion. So, the town recently received notice of bankruptcy proceedings for the property owner at two Lincoln Place, a property that has been delinquent in taxes for several years. And last year, the town received an foreclosure judgment on the property, allowing the property to be auctioned. As the town is one of the primary creditors needing the bankruptcy proceedings, we need to retain special counsel with expertise in this area of law to assist. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Anybody opposed?
New York State Liquor Authority Special Event Permanent Application, six degrees or less brewery, resolve with the Town Board of the Town of Austin hereby authorized that the supervisor sign the landlord authorization form for the New York State Liquor Authority Special Event Permanent Application made by six degrees or less brewery to serve beer at a Galata House fundraiser to take place on September 16th, 2021, at Lewis Angle Park. And we have further resolved that the applicant will provide proof of insurance and the letter of indemnity to the town in a form acceptable to the town.
Motion. Second. So, the Galata House is holding a fundraiser at Lewis Angle Park on September 16th. We have some great bands lined up, check it out, with Austin local brewer, six degrees or less brewery serving beer. In order to receive a special event permit coming state liquor authority day, we'll need a signed landlord authorization form from the town as the owner of the part of property, which this resolution authorizes me to sign as a town supervisor. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? So, with that, might I have a motion to adjourn to work session? All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, so I'm going to launch into a few announcements to begin our work session. I look a little surprised, but yeah. Earlier today, we announced that out of an abundance of caution, we have decided to cancel the very popular fireworks concert, food truck, and craft beverage event scheduled for Friday, September 3rd. After learning that Westchester County canceled their two large fireworks events, which were planned for September 2nd at Kent's Go Dam and September 4th at Hudson Hills, we took a closer look at our plans. While a typical food truck, Friday concert series event draws no more than 500 participants approximately, our fireworks tend to draw much larger crowds to the tune of four to 6,000 in recent years. And with the county council in theirs, we anticipate even more. This makes fireworks a riskier proposition than our typical summer Friday events. We love fireworks, but we love you more. And I would thank Mary Risco for that. We want to make sure we do everything we can to protect our school staff and students so everyone can have a successful return to school. And we certainly want to honor the health of our essential workers. While we are disappointed, we know this is the right move in light of the Delta variant and a recent uptick in COVID hospitalizations. We are hoping to schedule a regular concert with soul sacrifice and our favorite food trucks and craft beverages for Friday, the 10th of September, a little bit earlier since it's getting dark earlier. And we will reschedule fireworks to celebrate Independence Day in July, 2022, fingers crossed. We will keep you posted on these plans. So, it's very disappointing that we are having to cancel some of our late summer plans and therefore a great opportunity for us to remind everyone to please go get vaccinated if you have not done so already. The Pfizer vaccine now has full FDA approval and booster shots are rolling out for the earliest recipients of the vaccine and those who are immunocompromised. Vaccines are still our best defense against COVID-19, and it has never been easier to get vaccinated. Most pharmacies offer walk-in appointments and the Austin Volunteer Ambulance Corps, also known as Ovac, is vaccinated at their headquarters on Fifth Avenue on Wednesdays and Fridays. If you have questions about vaccine, you can go to vaxupwestchester.org, which is a great resource for facts. And the Westchester County Department of Health has also set up a phone line for residents to speak one-on-one with nurses and doctors about vaccines. Call 914-995-5800 to connect with a healthcare professional in either English or Spanish to ask questions. This week marks the first day of school for Austin and Briar Cliff students. We're wishing all students, teachers, faculty, and parents a safe and engaging new school year. Austin Recreation has partnered with the Austin School District to offer an after-school program for kindergarten through sixth grade students every day from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Busing will be provided on days when there is in-person learning. Register at theostin.com. Speaking of school, school tax bills are now in the mail. If you are a taxpayer who usually pays taxes directly as opposed to through a mortgage escrow account, and you do not receive your bill by September 7th, please call the tax receiver's office at 914-762-8790. And of course, if you have any questions about your bill, please do not hesitate to reach out to our receiver, Honorable Holly Purlewitz and her team. They're always happy to help, and they always do so with a very big smile. You can even hear it over the phone. Please remember that emergency rental assistance is available for renters and landlords who may be behind on rent or receiving rent as a result of a COVID-19 pandemic. All you need to do is dial 211 to be connected with a local nonprofit to assist you with your application. This is extremely important now following the Supreme Court's decision to overrule the CDC's eviction moratorium. We're also awaiting news out of Albany regarding New York State's eviction moratorium. We have heard legislators are back at session to hopefully extend the deadline passed today for the state law. Please do not be afraid of these mandates and seek help. We all want to see families stay in their homes if possible, especially with the startup school. If you know anyone who may benefit from this assistance, please help spread the word. Join our first responders and elected officials from Austin and Briar Cliff on Saturday, September 11th at 9:00 AM at the Austin Waterfront for the annual 9/11 Remembrance Ceremony hosted by the Austin Fire Department. The event will be particularly meaningful this year as it marks the 20th anniversary of the 9/11 attacks. Also, Volunteer New York is partnering once again with Westchester County and the Westchester Parks Foundation to host 9/11 Serve and Remember National Day of Service. For more information about how you can take part in a day of service to honor victims of 9/11 and their families, anywhere from September 9th through the 12th, go to volunteernewyork, Mark your calendars for Wednesday, September 22nd for Car Free Day. Take the pledge now to go car free or car light on International Car Free Day at 511nyridechair.org. We're also looking for local businesses to participate in an effort to encourage community members to go car free or car light. If you're a local business owner and are willing to provide a special offer like a dollar off a drink, entry into a raffle, et cetera, for those who visit our businesses without using a single occupancy gas-powered car on Car Free Day, please let us know. Green Austin is assisting in this effort, and the survey to participate is available at www greenseastain.org. Finally, we are expecting the remnants of Tropical Storm Ida to pass through our area tomorrow into Thursday. This storm system could bring heavy rains and winds, even though its severity has reduced significantly since making landfall in Louisiana over the weekend. Please exercise caution and be prepared for some flash flooding as the storm passes through. We are very grateful to have been spared the brunt of the storm, we hope, and are thinking of those communities in Louisiana and Mississippi as they recover from this devastating hurricane. That's it for me. Do my colleagues have anything to add? Are we talking about the climate? Okay. All right, so anything else? Okay, with nothing else, we are going into our one work session agenda item this evening, which is a presentation regarding the potential town acceptance of the roadway at the Renaldi subdivision at 39th Stormy Town Road. Here to present to us is Carl Uchik. Did I get it right?
Charles.
Charles. Okay.
That's the last name, right?
I thought you said Charlie when he walked in, and then we had Carl along. So, okay, Charles. Charles, actually, but I got the last name right, which is better to get in person. From Langen Engineering firm for the developer, we're looking forward to hearing the presentation, having the opportunity to ask questions alongside our consultants and staff joining via Zoom and in person. We have Highway Superintendent Pete Connolly, Town Village Engineer Paul Freyoli, Town Planner Valerie Manostra, and Consulting Engineer Dan Ciarsia. We'll be taking the information we learn this evening into consideration in our ultimate decision upon this topic. And that, I turn it over to you, Charles.
Sorry, thank you very much. Good evening, Supervisor Member of the Board. My name is Charles Uchik with the firm of Langen Engineering. I go by Chuck. We represent the owners of approximately a six-acre parcel located at 39th Stormy Town Road. We have been working with your planning board and your staff for the better part of a year on a nine-lot subdivision, which includes a road that's approximately 750 feet long, represented on my presentation board in gray. The road has been designed in accordance with town standards, although we worked out a waiver request with the planning board relative to sidewalks. There was an agreement that we would put sidewalks along Stormy Town Road and not within the subdivision itself as part of our discussion about how to develop this nine-lot subdivision. The subdivision itself is fully conforming to your underlying R20 zoning criteria, and the road has been designed in conformity with your roadway standards. I believe your Commissioner of Public Works and your Town Engineer and Consultant the Planning Board all have looked at this design, agreed that it meets town standards. In fact, we have been working under the premise that this would be an acceptable town road, I would say, for probably a good part of this application. So, that's our project. We're asking the Town Board to consider this as a public road. There is a stormwater management system that goes along with this that has been designed to meet New York State DEC stormwater regulations. It controls runoff from the road and five of the lots as part of this subdivision. We also modified, or are proposing to modify, at the request of your staff, the drainage that exists, and about where the proposed driveway is. There's existing series of old culverts that come to open ditches right along the edge of the road. And as part of our project, we are bringing that up to standard and closing it so that it safely drains to an existing water course on our property. We've worked around this water course and the regulated adjacent area as part of our proposed development. There is an existing house which we're preserving, and one of the other nine lots has access onto Stormy Town Road as part of our proposal. Again, we've been in front of your planning board well over 12 months working on this application. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have relative to it.
Thank you very much. Anybody on the board, please start with any questions?
You got the stream that goes into toward you and then down to the Kilbrook?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Just trying to orient myself.
Yes.
Can you explain more of the details of the stormwater management system?
Sure. It's a very conventional stormwater management system. I typically try to describe it as, in simple terms, as a depression in the ground that we wrap stormwater runoff into that acts like a pool that holds the water and then discharges it slowly. So, it's, in essence, a graded area that has grass growing in it. And under normal circumstances, no rain. It simply looks like a grassed area. When it rains, it fills, and it slowly meters the water out. And that's all been designed in accordance with the current New York State DEC guidelines for stormwater management, both quality, so it considers the pollutants that come off a road, and quantity. So, we control the full range of storms, from a smaller storm like a one-year storm all the way up to 100-year storm, which is the guidelines that the ESET boards and their new stormwater regulations. And it's located right here. What happens is all the drainage from the road collects to a common point, drains into that basin, slowly fills up when it rains, slowly goes down when it releases the water.
So, it slowly filters into that wetland?
So, there's a discharge that goes into the water course, not a well, in a water course here, that we let out, and it goes out slowly. The whole goal is to, obviously, when we add more impervious area to a site and reduce it, that we increase, not the amount, but the rate at which water flows. And so, this is a way to slow it back. That's basically what this does. It slows it down and releases it so that the downstream systems, like this water course, aren't adversely impacted.
Okay. Is your driveway right at the stop sign, the intersection of the road that comes down? Or is it above there?
It's above that.
Right where there's a curve in the road?
Actually, we're on this straight section here.
Okay. So, the curve just a little bit?
Further up.
Can you explain a little bit about the maintenance that's required of the stormwater system?
So, this system really has very low maintenance. The drainage system in the street is like any of your other streets that have catchbasins. They have sumps, and they need to be periodically cleaned out, like you would your routine roads. This really just needs to be watched and the grass cut. That's really all that happens here because we don't expect any significant buildup of sediment. If that happens over a five- or 10-year period of time, you may need to go in over that length of time and clean it out once. But that's it. It's very simple. We purposely designed this, in fact, we modified the original design to this form of control because it's much easier to maintain and is much less impactful than the original concept that they had. So, it doesn't put a heavy burden. You may never go to this stormwater management system in five years, other than to make sure that the grass hasn't created a problem or the control structure that we use to outlet it, which is a big catch basin, isn't caught.
So, that portion of grass over there, you're saying that the town would have to mow that regularly?
Not regularly, no. Uh-oh. Because during the winter, it dies down, and then in the spring, it goes back. So, it doesn't have to be mowed regularly.
Or ever?
No, there is some maintenance. I'm not going to suggest that they're maintenance-free. But the duration really, it depends on a lot of things. So, what we find these days is these stormwater management systems based on the current regulations are significantly overdesigned. So, for example, I don't think you'll ever see this basin fill up. And so, what that means is that the maintenance responsibility or the maintenance requirements from way down, so we would expect that your crews that would go out to the site and maintain the catchbasins in your streets normally would look at this basin and potentially have to cut the grass. And that could be once a year, once every two years. It really depends on the way the stormwater management system works, the amount of rainfall that you've gotten and things like that.
So, what happens if they don't catch the sediment? You said five or five or 10 years, sediment would have to be cleaned out?
Potentially.
What happens if they don't? What was the?
So, the way the outlet structure that lets the water out is designed is there's a series of openings. They start at the bottom, and they kind of work their way up, and they're different sizes so that we can control the rate. If the sediment builds up to the point where the lowest opening is blocked, then the water doesn't go out as planned. Now, from an overall stormwater management perspective, what that really means is that less water than we were allowed to let go goes out. And what you'll find is that there'll be standing water in the basin. So, that's the one thing that happens when they start to fill up with sediment, is you tend to see standing water starting to occur because the outlet structure is not working the way it's supposed to.
Right, so to be clear, your ask is that we accept that as a town road, maintain it as a town road, and it will become our road?
Correct.
To maintain the stormwater system? And those are things that go together or can be separated?
They can be separate.
Can we, do you have any questions?
No.
Can we maybe, they're all there, so yeah, maybe we can get rid of the speech, the sharing of designs right now. And you can say, you can say, Chuck, okay. I wanted to just turn it over to our, to Paul Freyoli and Pete Connolly, our Highway Superintendent, and then the, those who are here for us. We'll go back to that gallery.
They're, they're, they just don't have the cameras.
Nice, okay. Paul and Pete. Paul and Pete. Do any of you guys have any other questions? Mr. Freyoli, do you have anybody?
Good evening. I think the Town Board knows. And is Dan Ciarsi on this call tonight?
He's in person. He's here.
Oh, hi, Dan.
Hey, Paul.
How are you? I'm sure Dan's told this to the board in the past. Dan's reviewing the site plan on behalf of the town. The village's role here is to look at the water main work, which there's still some administrative stuff we have to finalize with the developer working on that. But with regard to the stormwater, if I may, Dan, I don't know if the applicant was presented with, or if it's possible, Valerie might want to weigh in on this, if it's possible to have some form of an HOA where maybe some type of association could be responsible for whatever stormwater maintenance agreement might be put in place to do that if the highway department and Mr. Connolly saw a future where that wasn't going to be possible to maintain by town staff.
Valerie, do you want to say something? Yeah, so I would defer to, at this point, I think I would defer to the applicant, and that's one of the reasons why this whole topic has come before the board, not only between the road dedication, but also the question came up at the planning board whether an HOA is needed for the stormwater. And that's where the conversation took place about, the thought from the applicant was that the town would maintain the stormwater facilities. So, I think it, I would be best to defer to Chuck as to his thoughts on the HOA and thoughts that he had or discussions he had with the actual property owner.
So, the stormwater can be separated from the road, and the responsibilities for maintaining the stormwater can be separated from the ownership of the road. We do it both ways. This project has no other reason to have an HOA. And HOAs, from a land development perspective, aren't always preferred because that requires nine lot owners to always work together, they have to maintain the association, there's a lot that goes with it. So, we typically try not to have an association. However, if the Town Board were so inclined to believe that this was an acceptable road to be maintained by the town, we could create, it's not a homeowners association, but it's an agreement between the lot owners that would make the responsibility of maintaining the stormwater management system the lot owners. So, we can do that.
That would be an agreement that was reported against the properties?
Correct. And it typically has a clause in it that says if the lot owners fail to do what they're supposed to, the town can come do it and assess them. There's a whole mechanism. It's very normal. So, what we typically do in that case is we end all responsibility for maintenance of the road at the right-of-way line. So, that includes the curb, catchbasins, pavement, what you'd normally maintain your roads. Outside of the right-of-way line to the stormwater management system, that would be maintained by an association through an agreement that gets officially reported against the lots. We can do that, and the developer is willing to do that. Obviously, we have to create that association to do that, but if the board's not comfortable with, and your staff and all aren't comfortable with the idea of maintaining what really is a pretty simple thing to maintain, then we can go that way.
I'm going to open it up to our Highway Superintendent. Hello, Mr. Connolly.
Hello, everybody. How are you?
Do you have any questions?
No, but I do have a thought on it. You know, we're a very small department. We're probably the smallest in Westchester and maybe one of the smallest in the states. And if we're lucky on a given day, or we have seven people on the road, you know, doing our hardaway work and improvements, this is really only four days a week, to tell you the truth, Chris, Fridays are yard waste pickup days. And sometimes in the spring, it's even a half-day on Thursday. So, our workload is full every day. And it's good, and that's okay. I have no complaints about that. But taking on additional duties, such as, you know, new subdivisions, roads, and drainage responsibilities, maintenance responsibilities, nobody mentioned snow removal there tonight. So, it's also my feelings on lift stations, you know? It's just, our workload is full. We're just, we're keeping our chins above water. So, you know, in my opinion, we have a full plate, and taking on any additional responsibilities is only going to back up other work that we have, our normally scheduled work. Now, there's more grass cutting involved, snow plowing, what have you. And the other stuff, I get very frustrated, doesn't get addressed in a timely manner for the rest of the town. So, I'm against taking on anything new, such as these projects. It's something like Thornton Hill also. So, you know, it's, again, we're very small, and we have a full plate as it is.
Yeah, I will say that in, since I, at least since I've been supervisor, any new subdivisions that have come on, come on and taken on responsibility for their roads, cul-de-sacs, subdivisions, all new roads, that I, again, which isn't a lot, but, you know, some of these smaller subdivisions like cul-de-sacs, cul-de-sacs, I think typically aren't that easy to plow. So, you know, it's definitely a challenge. I think we appreciate the fact that you really bring up the road to town standards, and that's great, but it is definitely a challenge.
I just, I'm kind of new to the loop, so this question was asked today, I apologize. Dan, if, has there been consideration or Plan B if the board does choose not to accept the road to have the appropriate easements in place or whatever they're expecting to be maintained by the utility, like, I don't know what you have going in there for sanitary sewer or, I'm just familiar with the potable water, but either way, those aren't going to be meter pit extensions. I'm assuming it's going to be a water main extension with Westchester County that you're going to file with hydrant on the end and everything else?
Yeah, and as far as the water, Westchester County wouldn't want it any other way. They would want us to.
Yeah, I get it. I get it. I just didn't know if that was presented as like a Plan B to the Town Planning Board where you're showing the requisite easements and such that, you know, that they should be looking for on that, so we would have access to it if this road does not get accepted.
Well, the sewer already had an easement, but, you know, the whole review of this up until a few weeks ago really proceeded as if this was going to be a road dedicated to the town.
I know. That's kind of what I figured. That's why I'm throwing out the easement question now because I could make.
There's a right-of-way laid out. The right-of-way could be coincident with the general utilities for whatever's got to go within what would have otherwise been a dedicated right-of-way. I mean, the thing that I would throw to the board, the, you know, this is how the planning board looked at it. It becomes a philosophical issue. I appreciate the highway superintendent's concerns, which are legitimate, but the recent subdivisions that I'm aware of were done as clusters. There was one done on North State that Zappi did, and it was Thornton Hill. Those were both done as cluster subdivisions, and I don't even. as cluster subdivisions, and I don't even make the right-of-ways where I know the, the one on North State, I think, was only 40 foot wide, so it would not meet state requirements. Likewise with Thornton Hill, I think from day one, those subdivisions were thought of as clusters with roads that require an HOA. The, the ones that had been done in recent history that, that I'm aware of, we did lose a lane off of Potts, and we also did Gulteri off of Cedar. So the, the, the one scenario, which I don't have the whole story, but just something to be aware of, there was a cluster, I think it was called Pheasant Run, the one off of, of Chrome Dam Road. That one, to my understanding, was done as a private road, and ultimately the owners in that subdivision heavily lobbied the board to take it over because the question ultimately will be presented with, I'm not paying less taxes than anybody else is on a town road. How come their snow gets plowed? How come the, the mail truck will go in there? You know, school buses may not want to go in a private road. I don't know how the district approaches it. So ultimately, those, once the people move in, those are potential issues you may be faced with. But, but ultimately, we could do it either way. You know, as I said, from the beginning, unlike those other projects, this was contemplated as a town road, the dedication to the town, but we could change it up with agreements and modifying the plaque to accommodate either scenario. So I just wanted to, to point those things out to you, but ultimately, we, we could change this up quickly if it needed to be.
I'd like one little, what's H O H?
HOA is Homeowner Association.
Oh, H O H?
HOA, yeah.
I thought it was H O H.
So, I mean, the, you know, this is a discretionary determination by the board. There's no obligation for you to entertain it. Obviously, the applicant is here, and he has been before the, they've been before the planning board, so you, you can't take action tonight anyway because it's only a work session. So perhaps the best course of action is to digest what we heard tonight and see if there's any other information to get from the consultants for the town. And then potentially, if the board is so inclined, we can revisit this if you're meeting on 14th and 2nd. How steep is it going down?
Through the road? I think it varies a little bit. It's generally around 5% though. Yeah, so, so we have proceeded with this application through your planning board with the indication from your staff that this could be a public road. We invested a huge amount of money to get to this point under that premise. These are lots that will pay full taxes, and those are taxes that cover snowplow, road maintenance, and the like. We would have to go back and reassess this. We can get more density on this lot than the R20 zone. We designed this road in the right-of-way with the understanding that it would be a public road. And so we potentially have to go back and reassess that. No need to build this to town standards to support seven lots.
Actually, you do. The, the building inspector called me today, and he said all new roads that get built within the town need to be built to town standards, no matter what.
So you're making applicants build roads to town standards and not, not take on the normal obligation of maintaining roads, it sounds like? I don't quite, I don't quite understand how the math adds up.
Well, I think normal is a lack of communication, since obviously we have many, we have paper roads and the road in, in the, in the town that have been on the books for years and years. This is not, this wouldn't be the first. And that's, again, something that is, you know, apologies if you were somehow led to believe this. I don't know where that exactly came from, but I don't know that it was, it was certainly not intentional from Town Board's stand, from the Town Board's perspective, because we didn't know anything about it until then. So I hear what you're saying, and I think that the best course of action right now would be for us to consult with our professionals and we, 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 we should, I mean, think about it, you know, think about the information, and then we'll come back and let you know in a couple of weeks.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So with that, that was our only topic for this evening. I could have a motion to adjourn to executive session for the vice council, personnel, collective bargaining, and contracts. Thanks so much for joining us tonight. Next week, we will be taking our, it's Tuesday, so it will be late. So there will be no meeting the week of September 6th. We will be back with a legislative session on September 14th. I hope everyone has an enjoyable Labor Day weekend. Please do thank all of those essential workers that we know have been there for us throughout, and please consider the service, and we will see you soon.